Susan is done, we are.
Okay, so welcome everybody to the meeting of Tuesday, April 14th of the East Goshen Township Board of Supervisors. We have, for those of you who've called in on the Zoom video itself, we have Mike Lynch from the Board of Supervisors, Al Truitt, David Shuey, John Herzog, all of the Board of Supervisors. We also have Rick Smith, Township Manager, Don Altrell, Assistant Township Manager, Susan Diamore, Office Administrator, Mark Miller, Public Works, and Jason Lang, the Park and Rec Director on this platform. Chairman Marty Shane is participating by conference call. At this point, we have seven members of the public that are calling in. Susan, do you want to let this person in who just called? Susan, do you want to let that person in? Susan?
They're in. I'm sorry, John, I was having some technical difficulties with YouTube. I apologize.
Do you want to let that person in who just?
Everybody's in. Guest number that just entered the meeting with the phone number ending in 588, may I have your name, please? Guest that just entered with phone number ending in 588, may I have your name, please?
What is our protocol for that? If someone doesn't identify by name, or they, do they remain online, or are they excused?
They're in the waiting room.
Apparently, right now, they are in the meeting. I can put them back in the waiting room.
Now they're gone.
All right, let's go.
All right, so just a couple, so there are now seven, excuse me, six members of the public that have called in. Just a couple of things about how this meeting is going to work. Participants will be asked to identify themselves when being accepted into the meeting. The public will be muted during the meeting when the board is talking. For each agenda item that requires a board vote, the public will be unmuted, given an opportunity and ask questions. All other agenda and non-agenda public comments we make at the end of the meeting during the public comment section. Participants wishing to comment must state their name and must speak one at a time, and we'll do the best we can to make sure that nobody's speaking over each other. And just a general comment, thank you for your patience, you know, obviously, this is a new thing for all of us, so we're learning as we do this. So if we can be patient, I think this is going to go very smoothly. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Marty to call the meeting to order.
Yeah, this is Marty Shane. I happen to be chairman this year. I welcome Chris Bayshore from Malvern Borough, and I didn't pick up the name of the individual from West Goshen, but welcome to East Goshen. And away we go. I would like everybody to join us in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag, which I will lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
David?
I'd like to request one of silence in this particularly unusual and settling time for those who step into the, into harm's way, make sure that we're safe. Moment of silence for our military, our healthcare workers, our emergency service workers, and Thank you.
Before we get started, Marty, we have one more person in the waiting room.
Go ahead. Hello?
Hi, can you identify yourself, the caller ending 588?
This is Leo Sinclair. I've been trying to talk. You guys have me on mute?
Okay, thank you, Leo. Welcome. You'll be muted, and Leo, just so you're clear, we just talked about how this is going to work for East.
Yeah, I heard, I heard, I heard. I have YouTube on.
Okay.
All right. Let's go.
All right, Marty, it's all you.
Okay, where's the vice chair? Take over.
Did we lose him?
No, he was muted, though. We'll get him.
Yeah, boy.
Marty, you're good now. You can talk.
Okay, this is the, we are being live streamed tonight, for people that need to know that. The public hearing, which we normally have in the beginning and the end of the meeting, will all be taken at the end of the meeting. The chairman's report is as follows. The board met in an executive session on March 5th, 2020, to discuss a police labor matter. We also met via telephone and video conference on March 16th, 23rd, and 30th, and April 6th and 9th, to talk about things that were going on in the, in the world. Whoever said that, I didn't hear it. One of our people can pick up and answer it, that's fine.
Someone's watching the YouTube live, that's what was in the background.
Okay, and the other, the other thing I need to discuss is Karen Miller has resigned from the Police Pipeline Task Force. And Rick, do you want to give everybody a quick summary of the change in the trash, the trash charges and the way we're picking up the trash?
Sure. We have suspended bulk pickup and yard waste for the time being. Regular trash will be, still be collected twice a week, and recycling will be done once a week, and they ask that everything be put in a container, and that the cardboard, if needed, be bungled and, and put next to the container. Everybody okay with that? Okay, the next, the next item is the emergency services reports. We have two for the Goshen Fire Company for February and March, and for Good Fellowship of West Chester for February. They are available on the website if anybody would like to read them. I will move on to the next item with, which is the minutes for the March 3rd, 2020 meeting. I find nothing wrong with them. Is there a motion for approval?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we approve the minute, March 3rd, 2020.
Although, any comments from the Board of Supervisors?
None.
Is there any other comments from the members in the audience? See none, I will call to question all those in favor of the motion.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, thank you very much. The next item is the, there is no old business, the next item is the Treasurers Report. Is there a motion to approve the Treasurers Report? David?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the Treasury Report.
Michelle, is there a second?
I will second that.
Although, is there any comments from the, from the Board of Supervisors?
No.
No.
Is there any comments from the audience? I will call to question all those in favor of the Treasurers Report and the bills. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, thank you very much. There is no old business tonight. The first order of new business is to consider a resolution to ratify the actions taken during the state of emergency. Is there a motion to that effect? David?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we ratify the declaration of a procedure that was previously discussed by executive action.
And I'd like to second that. I'll second that.
Ricky, do you want to make any comments?
Uh, no, I think it's all self-explanatory.
Okay, although, is there any questions or comments from the Board of Supervisors?
No.
No.
From those, from those in the audience? All those in favor of ratifying the resolution, please be, please say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous, thank you very much. The next is to consider replacement of the CAT Mini Excavator. You have the, you have the information in the packet. Is there a motion to do that, David?
Mr. Chair, I move that we, second. Did we, did we accept receipts and approve the expenditures? We approved the Treasurers Report, I just want to.
Oh, I, I happened to did, I did add the bills to it, but I don't, you may not have heard it.
No, that's correct.
That's okay. Is there, is there, if you don't think I did it, is there a second, Michelle?
I, I'd like a little clarification what we're, what we're doing right this moment. Are we, are we actually considering, under new business, the, the replacement of the CAT?
Yeah, we, I didn't realize combined the Treasury Report and the payment of the bill, so.
Okay.
Chairman, I'd like to move that we purchase Caterpillar Mini Excavator from Foley Cat, a amount of $63,500, net of trade-in of the existing Caterpillar Mini Excavator.
And I would second that.
Is there any comments or questions from the board?
Yes, I have, I have a couple of questions regarding, it's, it's kind of, it's a lot of money. I'm looking at, is there a chance that we could consider putting this off for a month or two for this particular purchase?
Ask the question to Mark, because usually we, or John, we usually have the money in the, in the fund to do that.
In the sinking fund. I understand that that's usually where it's located, but I'm wondering if there isn't maybe a little bit of, maybe we can consider holding off on that, just pumping the brakes. I know that we're going to need it for the pond projects, which are not happening right at the moment anyway.
I'll just make an observation, not, not a recommendation, but just an observation. The funding for the, the excavator would come from the Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay.
As, as Marty said, it is fully funded already. The, the pond projects are being paid for out of the operating fund, so it is.
Let me be clear, John. I understand we have the money. How badly do we need the excavator? We need it right away.
I defer to Mark on that one.
Okay, Mark, do we need it right away?
Yeah, it's, it's, the lead time to get it is two months, so it's, so tonight, I still got to wait two months to get it. They're going to give us a loaner machine to use in the meantime. This machine is primarily used for sewer lout repairs and so forth back in tight spaces. It can go back through somebody's yard, we don't destroy it. It's got a little extra digging depth than the one we currently have, and this is, I mean, this is, it's a machine that we use every day, so, yeah.
Okay, when are we paying for it? Two months from now?
On receipt. On receipt of the machine.
Okay, well, then, then it seems to me that's okay, if it's two months, or whenever it's going to be.
Let me ask a question, if I might. Mike Lynch, is it possible, Mark, that the piece of equipment may be further delayed due to the overall economic environment, whatever the relationship is between the vendor and the manufacturer?
Uh, no, I talked to the vendor today from Foley Cat, and he has located a machine up in upstate New York, and that's brand new, it hasn't been used, so he would be able to get it, just travel, we can get it here at travel time instead of waiting to two months, so we would have it sooner rather than later.
Then we'll have to spend the money right away.
We're still holding off for two months, is that right?
It's going, it's going to be, yeah, it's going to be over 30 days before we get it, yes, before you pay for it.
Is, is the board comfortable if we just say, let's, let's hold off receipt until June, June 10th, June 15th, something like that? If you want to make it 60 days, does that make, provide some more comfort, Michelle and John?
I think so.
I, I personally, I personally don't see a problem with, with getting it and paying for it. If Mark uses it every day, he's going to use it upon, upon receipt, because the other one's going to go, I would assume that we're trading in, so we're, we're just going to foul Mark up by fooling around here, because the money's the money, it's there, it's, it's not, deferring the payment, to me, is not going to accomplish anything, except screw markup, and I, I don't think we ought to do that, personally.
I'm kind of in the same mind, Marty, I just want to make sure we're all comfortable as a board in, in making it happen, so, you know, I'll leave it to the comments of John and Michelle, but just trying to find a comfort level here that everybody can live with.
Well, the other problem is the current machine we have is neither, in need of some repairs, so that, and that's why I would rather keep, I'd rather get the machine sooner than.
Okay.
Before we go to public comment on this, I want to make a comment. Let's open that public comment open a little bit longer than we did on the last item. There's two callers that are in the waiting room, if Susan can have the floor for a second.
Sure, do you want me to let them in? Yes.
Yes, please.
Caller that entered with the number ending in 078, can you please state your name? Caller ending in 078, can you please state your name?
Hang up on him.
Try the other one.
Yeah, do the other one.
Caller with ending in 629, can you please state your name? The two callers that just came in, can you please state your name?
Oh, Russ Frank.
Russ, is the last three letters in your, the last three numbers in your phone number 629 or 078?
629.
Okay, thank you, Russ. Last chance, caller with ending in 078, can you please state your name? I am putting you back into the waiting room.
Okay, so where do we stand? I'm, I'm ready, you know, I think a motion was put out in a second, if I'm not mistaken, and delivery in approximately 60 days, or at least in 30 to 60 days. I'm comfortable with that, if, if that's, if others are of a majority mind.
I'm not sure that that, I'm not sure that that's what the motion was, so we got to be careful that we don't approve something that wasn't the motion. Hey, John, do you, what's, what's the motion say?
The motion was to purchase the CAT Excavator for 63,000, whatever, 500.
Right away.
Fully.
Or whenever was necessary. Michelle and John, are, where are you in this thing?
Well, if it needs repair, I think that, that kind of changes my feeling on the matter.
I'm good.
John, is that the same with you?
Yeah, I'm good.
Are you all right with that, Mike?
Yeah, oh yes, I'm fine.
Okay, then I'll open it up for, is there any questions from the members of the audience?
I have a question. Leo Sinclair here. Yes. Okay, gentlemen, and Michelle Truitt, I, I want a reality check for a second, and I'm not going to stand on my soapbox or anything, but yesterday I was in a corporate meeting. I work for a very large international corporate company, and they announced yesterday that a substantial amount of individuals will be furloughed. I myself have had my salary cut, and I've been told there'll be no bonuses this, this year. Now, I'm talking just for myself, I work for one very large corporation, and I don't know whether the board here understands what you're, what you're doing, what you're, what you're basically saying, setting forward. The issue I have is this, I, I understand you said, we have money in the bank, we have money to spend, I get that, okay? I personally, at my house, I have money in the bank, but hell, I am saving my money, fearing in the next month to two months, I'm not going to have a job, okay? I'm going to need that money in the bank. And also, I find it insulting that you want to go ahead and spend money, and by the way, I have deep respect for Mark and his team, okay? Those guys do a phenomenal job. However, I seriously think any and all spending should come to a complete halt in respect of the residents of East Goshen Township. For those of us who are on the cusp of losing our jobs and, and losing substantial financial means of where we are, I think it'd be insulting for the Board of Supervisors to allow spending to go forward as if nothing is happening. That's all I have to say on this matter.
Leo, let me, let me respond, let me, let me respond in this way.
He's open.
This is a function, this is a machine that's used every day in our operation, it's not a machine that's used for certain specific purposes, so as far as we know, and we've had a lot of conversation about this, that we're not going to be affected, or Mark's, Mark's people are not going to be affected by anything that's going on unless this whole thing turns around and we get, it gets to be a real big problem, and, but the way it is today, we, we are able to manage everything, and they need a new machine in order to do their work. From my opinion, I, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate what you're saying, but I think in this particular case, it's a little bit different, because we prevent them, that we have a staff here, and, and if we don't get the stuff now, machine now, we're going to hold them up from doing things that, and it just backs them up and makes things more complicated for them.
That's a good point. Marty, Marty, if I could just say one thing about that, maybe people aren't aware, but Mark Miller's staff is all working, and they have a lot of work to do. They were on Cornwallis Drive today, I saw a bunch of them, and they were working like beavers. We have not laid anyone off at this point.
Nor do we plan to.
Well, we'll, we'll see about that.
By the way, I, I, I think that everybody has to be conscious of the fact that Mark's team saved us a lot of problems with a, with someone finding out about that leak at the bank over the weekend, and they were forced to work on Saturday and then finish up with, or work on Friday and finish up on Saturday. So I, I would say that there's a rather urgent need for Mark and his people to have the equipment. I certainly appreciate what Leo, Leo's saying, and that's some of the conversations that we have had up until this point in time, that I announced in some of the other meetings. So we're not insensitive to this, but I think in this particular case, it probably is prudent to get the, get the machine and get on, and get on with it, so Mark's people can do what they, they have to do, because otherwise, we're going to get really backed up with doing grass.
Yeah, okay, very good.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to poo-poo she, I mean, if people, if there are people in the board that agree with, with Leo, then we ought to hear about it, if not, then we ought to move on.
Well, let's, let's focus on, there's one more person that's just called in, let's identify them, and then we have some more public comments to, to see if there's any more public comment.
Caller that just entered the meeting ending in 078, can you please state your first name?
Tom.
Tom who?
Last name?
Tom Kilburn. Tom Kilburn.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning, Tom, we're going to have a good evening, Tom.
Okay.
Is there any more public comment period we've got regarding this, the, the purchase of the CAT Mini Excavator? If not, I'll call to question of the board, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Was it unanimous? I don't, I didn't catch the number five.
Any nay votes?
No nays?
Nope.
I have an o. Thank you very much. The next one is a replacement of mowers. I think that this was on, or at least it was on the last agenda, we, we, somebody had to get some information, I think it was. Is, is that, is that what's going on?
No, it was just, this was on the last agenda, and the last meeting was canceled.
Oh, that's what it was, okay. David, you want to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd move that we purchase the two X-Mark mower, Onway Power Equipment, in an amount of $16,044, net of existing mowers.
And I would like to second that.
Okay, does any of the board have any comments or questions?
I have a comment. I appreciate the fact that we're using a local vendor for this.
Yeah, we do that all the time. We, we're very, we, Mark has a very good relationship with these people, by the way.
Yeah, they're a good outfit.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
The only question I have is, are we mowing?
Yes.
Okay, so we need the machines.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good.
Is there any comment, is there any comments from the audience?
I'm trying to unmute here.
Everybody is unmuted. Everybody is unmuted.
We have to give them a chance to say something.
Is, is it okay if I speak now, or?
Yes.
Identify yourself, please.
It's, it's Russ Frank. The only question I have on this lawn mower thing is, these are mowers that are used to cut the, the ponds in, say, East, in the Marydale section?
Uh, no, the Marydale, we use the big tow behind tractor, our powers. These are the little guys that we use, all like 10 foot behind the curb line, everything with them.
Oh, okay, because, because the concern I would have had if they were is the, all the rocks and debris that's in that pond area would destroy mowers.
No, just, just so you know, we are, we're, the rock, picking up the rocks is on our list.
Okay.
Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to comment one, one more time with a record. Again, this is Leo Sinclair. Again, deep respect for Mark and his team, but I object to township spending at this time.
Nice, thank you, Leo.
All right, Leo, thank you very much. I, I would, I would say the same, Tom, I won't repeat myself, I would say the same thing again. Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to say anything? I'll call a question then. All those in favor of the motion, approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, as far as I can tell.
No, no, any nay votes?
No, okay, good. Okay, the next item is considering a stormwater management agreements for the chairman to sign with respect to 1540 Glenbach Lane, 1620 Williams Way, and 1424 Highgate Road. David, do you have a motion to that effect?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that the board authorize chairman to sign the stormwater managements and maintenance agreements for the three addresses delineated.
And I would second that.
Does the board have any comments or questions? Is the audience have any comments or questions?
I haven't.
I don't think happy birthday has to do anything with.
Yeah, I don't think that was a public comment.
So, all in favor? Aye, anybody, anybody, is anybody out there? Aye.
This, on the stormwater management, aye.
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 Well, we called a que, is that what we did? We called a question, because I can't hear anything from here.
Yes, I think, I think it was a five-nothing vote.
Okay, fine, thank you. The next is the, is to consider the, the grand extension of the Pelly Pike Trail for segments F and G. David, do you have a motion to that effect?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. Move that the board approve the Chester Municipal Grant Program Amendment, extending the Chester Municipal Grant Contract termination date to April 21st, 2021, and authorize the chairman to sign that contract.
I'll, I'll second that.
John, do you want to say just about two, two words on what this is all about?
Yeah, it's currently, the, the grant is set to expire, it's a $150,000 county grant for the segments of the trail that run through Applebrook Park. It's, it's, you know, we're near completion, but technically, the grant expires on April 21st, so this would just extend that period for a year. Obviously, we'll be finished well before then, but just administrative.
To hope.
Okey-dokey. Any, anybody on the board have any comments, questions?
Nope.
No.
Anybody, any, anybody in the audience have them? I'll call the motion, all those in favor of the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you very much. Next is considering the sanitary sewer manhole adjustments on segment A on Pelly Pike. Mark, Mark Miller, do you want to give a little bit of a summary before David makes a motion?
Yeah, this manhole is actually in the trail, and has to be raised two and a half, two and a half feet, and you're just signing off on it that you're, we're a contractor to raise it two and a half feet.
Okay, this is one of the ones the chairman has to sign.
Correct.
Okay, Dave, you want to make the motion?
Yes, I'd like to move that the Board of Supervisors authorize the chairman to sign the project agreement for incorporated work forwarded to the Pennsylvania Department.
And I'll, and I'll second that.
All those in favor of the motion? Is there any comments or questions for the board?
We have to have public comments.
Yeah, just want to let you know that the municipal authority last night reviewed this, and they recommended that the board take this action as well, they supported it.
Agreed. Anybody else? Anybody from the audience?
I have no comments, but I guess we have to have a public comment?
Yes, public comment?
Again, this is Leo Sinclair. Is there any cost associated with this, and if so, how much is the cost?
$1,600.
There's nothing with, there's no cost associated with extending the, the, the grant.
No, no, we're not talking about that, Marty.
We're talking about the manhole. The manhole cost is $1,606.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to ruin.
Mark, $1,600.
Yes, that's correct. That's worst case.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, thank you.
Anybody, is there anybody from the audience who wants to say anymore?
Uh, see, we just.
Well, I, I think, if she got muted, it, it means we gotta, we gotta talk.
Consider resolution twenty twenty establishing sewer rates, that's where we are.
Yep. Uh, the next item is, is, is G, for those that are following it on the, on the agenda, it's consider the establishment of the sewer rates. Um, John, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, real briefly, normally every April, we, we get data from Aqua about winter time water consumption, which is a proxy for people's use of the sewer system, which is the basis for the next four quarters or twelve months. Um, we actually get the data from Aqua and we, we theoretically could reset the rates, but given the substantial customer service considerations and resetting sewer rates, or just not, we just aren't able to handle the huge volume of calls that come at, in after we change rates, as well as the kind of recognition, I think, to what Leo was getting at, that at this moment in history, people want some sort of, um, they don't want, it's not the time for, for sewer bill surprises.
Right.
That this resolution would maintain last quarter's rates at exactly the same level as this quarter's rates. Chris is prepared to get those sewer bills out in the mail tomorrow if this resolution passes.
Uh, John, just a, just so nobody's caught by surprise, if, if we end up getting into the third quarter and the same situation holds, what do we plan to do?
That's a good question, Marty, um, I, I would sort of say let's cross that bridge when we get to it.
Okay.
I would say let's cross that bridge when we get to it, let's not get too far ahead of ourselves right now.
Okay, I, I would, I would enter into the minutes that fact that we have not established any ground rules for the third quarter in the event that we need to consider that.
That's good, yeah.
Uh, do we need a motion for that, or do we need a motion, Ricky, do we need a motion?
Yes, you need a motion to pass the resolution.
Okay, uh, all, is it, David, go ahead.
Let me make the motion, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the board approves resolution twenty twenty dash one nine two, which is authorizing continuation of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty sewer rates for the second quarter of twenty twenty in the township.
And I would second that, I'll second that.
Does the board have any comments or questions?
I do not.
Is there anybody in the audience have any comments or questions?
I have a question again, it's Leo Sinclair.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I'm a little bit concerned about what I'm hearing, I mean, it's great that you guys don't want to raise our rates, I, I, I applaud you for that, however, I do have one serious concern, and I'm curious if anybody's even thought about this, um, since majority of us are at home, if not all of us, as we should be, I would assume that the sewer system is getting hit, hit a hundred percent, or they're, close there too. Um, when you talk about the third quarter, I assume that, that you're, you're making some sort of observations now, that since we're not quote raising rates now, then it kind of lets me to wonder, well, why do we raise rates last year, if this year we're doing, we're going to be doing substantially a lot more quote flushing, and I'm, I'm concerned about the third quarter.
Let me address that, um, so as far as the data that we use from Aqua reflects the period of time from October first of two thousand nineteen to May thirty, March thirty-first of, of twenty twenty, so really that shutdown order was only in effect for the last two weeks or so of that period of time that we're looking at.
I, I understand that. I do understand that, I'm just simply saying, I'm raising the red flag now, because I see that we'll be going into the third quarter, um, somewhat penalized.
In what way Leo?
Because more people are using the system now, and we're going to see that in the third quarter, that as you're, as you're saying, we're taking a step backwards in time.
So you're saying that flows are going to go up in the third quarter?
Oh, yes, yes.
Well, I mean, yeah, actually, well Leo, I'll just put it in a, in a plug for attending a municipal authority, um, and those flows are, you know, are announced every, every month, actually, and that's a good question, Mark, um, remind me for Mark Miller, for the March flows at Ridley and West, do you see any noticeable change overall?
Uh, we, we're up to like, no, we noticed the, yes, the flows have gone up, it's comparable to weekend flows, or home.
So, but I mean, but on, on a system wide level, like what would be increase, say, February and March?
No, the February, March flow's been normal, we're fine.
Yeah, so, so Leo, I mean, I think you're probably right on the, at the individual residential level, there probably are greater flows, but then, you know, the YMCA is closed, that's our single biggest, um, user by a country mile, and those are, you know, essentially zero, so, you know, you're, you're, you have pretty much as the same daytime, like work population as, um, as you have, you know, residents, like number of people who work here compared to number of residents who work elsewhere is, is kind of offsets, so if you look at the, at the sixty-four thousand dollar, excuse me, three, six thousand, it's a wash, so we're not going to really see, based on what Mark was saying, what I'm saying, you're not going to see greater need for chemicals, you're not going to see a greater need for, um, you know, just, just the, the, the daily oper, you know, treatment of wastewater, so I think it's a really good point you raised, but I don't think, it's something that we're watching, but, and, and you know, certainly, if we got a third quarter and we were seeing a big spike, you know, we'd raise the alarm on that, but I don't think that's, that's something that we've noticed quite yet as being a huge area of concern.
John, let me ask a question for clarification, if I might, the, the data period from October through March to possibly reset the rates, are you saying that we're not going to, even though we're pushing back any consideration to raise rates until the third quarter, are you saying that we are not going to use that data period from October to March to set the rate, and we're going to use a new data period?
No, 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 quite the, no, 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 we would still use that winter time water use, and the reason for that, just is for the, for the, I know Leo knows this, but for the others in the audience, you know, during, from October to March, whenever you use water, your chances are it's flowing into the sewer, when you use water now, chances are you're watering your lawn, or you're, you know, filling, well, not now, but two months from now, filling swimming pools, things like that.
Okay.
You know, so we, we definitely want to exclude springtime.
That's the data period that will remain static, no matter whether we did it now or wait for another three months to reset the rate, if it's.
Correct.
Okay, very good, so the data has indicated that the flows through March are, have not been modified or increased based upon the current shutdown, uh, at least markedly, Leo's got a good point, but the data period seems pretty normalized.
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you.
But can I ask a question?
Question?
So, are you saying that the third quarter, they're going to look at the consumption in the third quarter to adjust rates?
No, no, again.
I'm trying to understand, it's kind of hard to hear this over.
Yeah, sorry, just, just to clarify again, we, we measure consumption from October first, essentially October first until March thirty-first, based on the reads that Aqua gives us, we would never look at your house and say, you know, in the spring or summer, you used X thousand gallons of water, therefore that's going to build you for sewer, because as I said, that's when you're watering your lawn and you're not using the sewer systems much, so, we're still, we'd still use the same data set, we just wouldn't re, we just wouldn't use it for, for three months.
Yeah, gotcha.
I just, here's when you keep mentioning the third quarter, that's.
It's just a pushback date, Ross, it's just a pushback date, but not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Pushback date to set the new rate for the, for that.
Correct.
Based on that period from October to March.
Okay, I got you now, thank you very much.
Bear, bear in mind, we're, we're, we're making this a little more complicated, what John in the motion says is that we, the rates will be the same because they're predicated on the same data, however, we have to look at the environment in the third quarter and see if it's anything approaching this quarter, or whatever we want to do with, or, and cash flow, to see if we need to freeze rates or not freeze rates, so.
Yeah.
I understand what John is saying, it has nothing to do with the calculation of what the rates would be, it has to do with whether or not the environment changes from what, what we'd expect it to be.
Yeah, there you go, uh, so there's a motion out there?
No, wait a minute, they, wait a minute, Mike, I know you're in a hurry, but we haven't given the people upstairs or wherever they are, a chance to, a chance to comment.
Any others, okay?
Is there anybody, is there any comments from the audience?
Okay.
All those, okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of that, the next item is, and the last item in new business is the consideration of the, of the bid results for the cleaning and televising of the sewer lines. Mark, uh, before David makes a motion and Leo makes the same comment, is there any, is there any, is there, is this necessary to be done now, or can it wait?
No, this has to be done, because especially after what happened last Saturday, pipe data low bid, and that's, I would recommend awarding so.
Okay, thank you.
Is it in the budget?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's about, yes.
David, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to move that we approve the bid and contract from Pipe Data View Services in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars.
And I'd like to second that.
Is there any comments or questions from the board members?
Now, I just make a comment that the bids were.
Spread.
All over the, uh, just so the public knows, our bids range from eighteen, that we're awarding up to eighty-six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, so, according to the lowest bid.
I think the two high bidders are taking a pot shot, and if we were in straits, they figured we don't need the business, or we don't want it, so let's.
Right.
And if they take it, great, if not.
Yeah.
We, we don't get any gravy, that's all right.
Yep.
No gravy for them.
I can, I can tell you, we've used pipe, we've, we've used pipe data, uh, many times, is that right, Mark?
Yeah, yes.
So I, I, they, they may have a better feel for what we can tolerate or not, so that being in mind, is there any comments from the audience?
Okay, again, this is Leo Sinclair.
Hold on.
Again, just to aim for the record, again, I have deep respect for Mark, I, I do understand in this particular case, this is a necessary evil, as we could say, so I'm not going to object, but I do want to again acknowledge that we definitely need to keep an eye on our spending.
Yeah, duly noted.
Thank you.
Leo, the only one to make comments?
Aye, thank you.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you very much. The next item, there is, there is a, any other matters, John, you want to talk about that now, please?
Yeah, um, I did get an email, uh, earlier today from the woman that sells ads and, or the company that designs and sells ads for our newsletter, asking if we would, are planning on doing a summer newsletter, um, I mean, I think that they are prepared to sell ads for us for the, the summer, but as I thought about it, I called Jason on the phone, I said, you know, it'd be really tough for us to put any, like, for any rec programming to put hard and fast dates in there, um, you know, just a lot of the, the kind of normal stuff that we would put in newsletter, with everything changing so quickly, it, you know, as we saw from the, the spring newsletter, I mean, I think it was a good, but nothing in there, you know, came to fruition, does it make sense to, to skip over doing a summer newsletter, we save ourselves basically twenty-eight hundred dollars, and wait until things kind of settle down in the world before we're announcing events, or, or, or do you think we should just continue on and give?
John, that, that's a probably a good point, let me ask a question, would it make any sense, depending on the staff, uh, burden on any, on the staff, to just have an electronic, modified, scaled down version that covers the basics?
Yeah, I mean, we could do that, we would, we could just do that in-house and not sell ads, like, you mean, like the way we used to do it a decade ago?
Yes, and that way, up until, you know, I, you could even probably change dates if you needed it, up until the, you know, the day it's published, or even after, if there's a, a fluctuation and, and changing circumstances, and that way, you can have control in-house and people aren't put out with, uh, you know, advertisements that, uh, you know, didn't pan out well in the actual newsletter that's printed.
So I would defer to my, my technical advisor, Miss Susan DiAmore, um, at the risk of putting you on the spot, are you proficient with like age maker and things like that?
She's at the beach, it doesn't matter.
I could, yeah, that's terrible.
We could have some fun with this, Susan.
Yes, absolutely.
Let me, let me be clear, what, what are you, what are you saying we should do?
Not put the, not do the printed newsletter.
Not do a print, yeah.
Okay, and, and where are you going to put the homemade one then?
On the website.
On the website.
Just on the website, not mailed out.
We could, we could email it.
Okay, I'm, I'm clear, that's good.
Yeah, it could still be emailed out, that's true.
Yeah, and honestly, be, because of the current, you know, situation here, I think saving the money on the print makes a lot of sense, and we still have all of our social media and the email contacts, so we can still put out the events, but all of those platforms allow us to very quickly adjust dates as needed, whereas the print newsletter is going to sit on a fridge, and then someone's going to get confused, and, you know, so I, I think this is just the most rational decision we can make.
Makes sense, saves twenty-eight hundred dollars, and it probably makes Leo happy.
How many, well, let me ask you a question this way.
Gets me happy too.
Let me ask the question this way, for whoever wants to answer it, that, that might know the answer, how, given the fact that we're going to do it a different way, how many households do you think we would reach in the alternative way?
Good question.
Oh, you, well, that's, that's a very good question, I mean, and I, we don't really, we, it goes to basically eighty-five hundred residential units, including apartment things, like apartment units, Bellingham, Wellington, those kinds of places, um, you know, and probably the renters in the Bellingham and Wellingtons are not, are probably not people who are signed up for constant contact, so we're definitely missing out on the renters, uh, you know, by the electronic.
Wait a minute, John, um, if we put it on the website, those people will have access to it.
That's correct, but they're, they're not signed up for, they're not signed up for constant contact.
Yeah, yeah.
There are, there are over four thousand users on Nextdoor, so we could.
Yeah, we can put it.
We could put it.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
And then maybe ask them to share, share with your neighbor.
Yeah.
What, what? I, I, when I, I wrote back this afternoon, I, I, I want them, everybody to realize, I can go either way on this, it's not a line and a sand issue, but I do know from my own experience in talking to people, there's a heck of a lot of people that read that newsletter, many, many more than I thought did, so, I think in, in the decision, you got to decide if you want, I mean, there's things that you could talk about, things that you could write about, the question becomes is, are, what is the expectation of the residents? It's not so much what we want to do, it's whether or not, uh, they got a system in place that, because a lot of them take and rip out their back page or whatever it is, where you have a lot of dates on things that are happening, so I, I'm, I'm in, I can go either way on this, but I don't think we ought to lose, whatever way we're doing it, we ought to try to capture as much as the eighty-five hundred people that we can, now, however that is, I don't know, otherwise, I, I think we would have a problem going the normal way, but I think this way's a good idea, as long as we can figure out a way of getting it to most of the, as many of the people as we possibly can.
Can you, what, what do you think, uh, John and Susan, as far as being able to get some information to make, uh, help Marty feel a little more comfortable with that, is there any you can do besides what you've already said tonight?
Constant contact, Facebook, Nextdoor, we could even.
I mean, you're always going to have a portion of the residents that are not going to, not use, be in the habit of checking email, or not have email, or not.
Right.
We know that that's the case, and there's no way you can reach them without mailing them, I think.
Do we have any percentage of, uh, what, not, what percentage of residents get the newsletter and, and just recycle it as soon as?
We have no, we have no information on that, I mean, we just.
I kind of ask that as a rhetorical, I'm sorry.
But, I mean, I, I just, I just think, I go back to what I think before, a month ago, you could never have predicted that we wouldn't have bulk trash, and we wouldn't have any more.
That's exactly right.
So, who knows what's the next, and for all we know, that, you know, when the news, summer newsletter comes out, every, life is back to normal for all we know, I mean, we just, we just don't know, and so, I just feel like there's no way we're going to put out information that's going to still be timely by the time it actually arrives in.
I agree, I don't want to put out confusing dates and, and create havoc for everybody else.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
I agree, and my position is that we, that we, uh, don't publish a summer hard copy letter, and that we, uh, we, we post a, uh, electronic version of it, advertise it as broadly, and so.
David, I would make a motion that with the way you wanted to, to read.
Okay, I got it. Okay, I got it.
Yeah, we need to vote.
Is John got that as, is John got that as your motion?
Yeah, I can probably get a motion from that, that we do an electronic.
Michelle, you seconding that.
I, I second, I second the motion as long as we're agreeing not to do the newsletter. For the summer.
I'm with you. I'm with you, Michelle.
All right, is, is any board member having any more comments?
Yeah, I have, I have a quick question on that, if I may.
Sure. Go ahead, Russ.
Is it, is it cheaper just to send a, uh, a letter out, a one, one-page letter stating what you guys had just talked about?
Actually, no, Russ, it would be more expensive because we sent it to eighty-five hundred residents, um, at fifty cents a pop plus, you know, ten cents of, it would actually be more expensive that way.
Okay.
That's the cost of the person stuffing the envelopes.
Yeah.
That's right.
Um, I make a comment.
All right, is there any comments from the, uh, the gallery?
I have a comment. I have a comment. Again, this is Leo Sinclair. Um, as most of you may know or may not know, I have the Chester County, Chester County Journal. I would be very, um, willing to take any information you have and put it on our site. Um, I will be expanding, yeah, I have no problem with that. And as a matter of fact, I'd like to reach out, reach out to Jason later and anything you guys would want to put forward out to the public and you're having difficulty doing it, free of charge, I'd be glad to help out.
Thanks, Leo.
Leo.
Thanks, Leo.
Okay, Leo. Uh, a call to question. All tho, all those in favor of David's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, that's everybody, correct?
Yes.
Uh, there are, there is. Folks, let me interrupt. Just in case, uh, I fade out here, my battery, uh, tells me my battery on the computer, not my battery, is, is fading. So just so you know, if I disappear, my battery is shot.
Well, as long as you're all right, you stay as long as we have to stay. You, you, you can't go to bed yet. I don't care what you say. Anyhow, there's four pieces of correspondence. Ricky, they're all available on the website, correct?
Correct.
Okay, they can be found on the website. Does anybody have any, anything else that they want? Or does anybody in the audience have any comments to make?
Is this a time to talk in the, uh, public comment area?
Yes.
Yes.
Listen, I joined this session a little late and you're already way past the topics by half an hour, what you were, have demonstrated or put out on your, uh, agenda. Is it too late to voice my opinion on this, um, what do you call it, the state of emergency that you filed?
No, you can comment.
No, no, you can make con, you can make a comment.
Comments, take a comment.
Yeah, okay, my question is, I, I probably don't really understand fully what the, what the reasoning for sending this letter, uh, pre, uh, knowing what kind of road we were going to be financially as a township. So can somebody explain to me, is this, is this to try to get more money from the federal government or from the state for things that we have lost on an income stream?
No.
You're, you're right, and we're, Ricky's will help.
John and Rick, yeah, John and Rick, please.
It was suggested by our solicitor that we should do this so that it, it doesn't guarantee that we maybe all get federal funding or any type of funding, but it is, at least it makes, it puts us in the running, so to speak.
But don't you have to demonstrate what, what your loss was?
Well, at some point, will we be able to apply, we may be able to apply for programs. The county has asked us to put together a course. But declaring a state of emergency allows the board to do certain things, um, and which, which they, which we did, which is like, you know, cutting back on the refuse, uh, canceling the meetings. But it also, um, formalizes the process so that going forward, if there's funding available, we can take advantage of.
And, and another thing that it does, Russ, is it, is it helps, so it, it basically authorizes the emergency management coordinator to get resources in support of the police department and the fire company. I know the chief is on the phone and she can probably talk to that, but, but it, it, it definitely helps from a public safety resource procurement standpoint.
But, but where, I guess where I'm coming from is you already, you already collected all the property taxes from us. You already collected, uh, income, you know, the East Coast's income stream that is out there. So if you've already considered all that and when you make your budgets, how would we harm by, uh, by this, by this virus, uh, shutting in? That's what I, I just don't understand that part.
Well, the other aspect of it, Russ, is that, um, it makes us, um, it puts us under the Public Readiness and Emergency Preparedness Act, uh, which is the Secretary of Health and Human Services, uh, you know, declared, uh, put the PREP Act into, uh, into effect. And, and without a declaration of emergency, uh, we can't participate in the, uh, DPA, the Department of Defense, program. We can't participate in the PREP Act, um, and it allows us to act under, so it's really not a, it's not a, a financial situation. Um, it's more in compliance state, the federal, state and county following in their footsteps.
That's right.
If I could add, the, it also allows, as John said, the emergency management coordinator can work through the county to get supplies, which we've been doing and putting them at Bellingham and at Wellington.
And without the PREP Act, uh, there's a limitation on our ability to get some of those supplies that are approved under emergency, um, authorization, all the, these authorization through the FDA for things like, uh, personal protection equipment, masks and those types.
All, all, all that's true, all that's true.
If you look under the fifth whereas, it gives us, uh, the, the reason to cancel public meetings, et cetera, a lot of which, uh, we couldn't do otherwise.
Okay.
Also, bear in mind that many, many of the communities in Chester County have done the same thing. And in addition to what everybody else said, the federal government now is, is putting together a package of money to go out to the states and the local municipalities. Uh, I, I can guarantee that if you didn't have this declaration, you wouldn't be eligible for that money if it ever gets here. Now, I'm not saying it's going to get here or not get here, but, and we don't know at the end of the day, before this is all said and done, what expenses that we're going to have, because when you're dealing with emergency services, you have to take care of whatever the problem is. And in order to get reimbursement for that, you have to make this declaration.
And you, and so that means that you're still documenting the excess expenditures for this emergency. I mean, it's just not, it's just not an open checkbook, is it?
No.
No.
It's an open checkbook when you get your twelve hundred dollars from the government.
It is.
Uh, I don't, I mean, is there any more, I, I can't hear everybody too much, too well, but is there any more comments from anybody about about the, uh, from the audience that wants to make a comment about anything?
Yeah, Tom, Tom Kilburn. Can I, can I make a comment? It's Tom Kilburn?
Sure.
Sure, I, I would just like to thank the, uh, board and the staff for, uh, navigating us through this very difficult time. Sounds like you guys are on top of everything. And I just kind of was, uh, looking forward to getting a little bit of an update tonight and I'm, I'm very confident that you guys are on top of everything and I really appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you.
I can tell you for myself, uh, because of being chairman, they've had some conversation with me. I, I will tell you that I know for a fact that Mark Gordon and his, or Mark Miller and his team, Ricky and John and Susan, and maybe others too, for that matter, I just don't know that. But they have gone overboard to make sure that everything is in place and the people, that we protect the people, the other workers to the extent that we possibly can. So, uh, on behalf of all of us, I want to thank them in particular for the efforts that they made. And I want to also thank Mark Miller and his team for the work that they did on the oil spill that they, they discovered last, last Friday. So I, I do appreciate everybody effort is and heaven forbid, we don't know what's going to happen, but hopefully we'll be out of this sooner than later.
Amen to that.
Amen, I agree.
To that, I'll, I'll entertain a motion for a German. Michael?
Mr. Chair, I'll let Michael second.
Yeah, I think we have to let Michael do that.
He's already gone, actually.
I just let him back in.
Oh my God, the guy went to Betty. He's the only one that came to this meeting in jammies. David, you want to make a motion for a German? You want to make a motion for a German? I'm plugged in.
Okay, you plugged in.
I am plugged in.
All right, second my, second my motion to adjourn this meeting.
Oh, perfect timing.
We all done, Ricky or John, is there any reason for anybody to stay on the phone?
No.
Marty, Marty, I, well, Marty, I want to let you know that, um, I have a bunch of Piscottis here, but I'm sorry. I, I just can't give any of them to you tonight or the rest of this month, for that matter.
Hey, John, I, I, Rick, or, uh, Mike, it's fourteen line road. You might as well stop on your way home.
Can't see him, but he's actually eating them right in front of us.
Hey, Rick, or Mark, Mark Miller, you're going to leave a packet for me tonight and I'm going to turn around and put it out there for tomorrow, right?
No, I'm. We'll get it to you tomorrow, Marty, tomorrow, tomorrow.
Oh, you're going to bring me tomorrow?
We'll get it to you tomorrow.
Okay. And when are you going to pick, was it, when, Rick or Mark, are you, if you're going to come, I'll just sign it while you're here and give you what, and give you what I have to take back.
Okay.
Okay, that's probably easier to do than anything else.
All right, so do, we, we had a motion to, to, to adjourn?
Does anybody have anything else we've done?
All those in favor of the motion?
Is everybody up, is the, everybody up in the audience? Are they, are they, which, what, what?